Mr. Chairman, for you. The independent engineering firm of Tetra Tech performed a review on this project, and we have Colin Johann in here in the audience to discuss his review.
Again, I'm Colin Johann, Senior Project Engineer with Tetra Tech, I'm sorry, Project Manager with Tetra Tech. We conducted an initial review on the project, on the plans that were submitted back in February, I believe. And we provided a number of review comments. The latest submission of plans, revised package, we noticed that the applicant had responded to the bulk of our comments. There were only two outstanding issues. One was regarding the retaining wall that would be constructed adjacent to the Newport Avenue Bridge. There was some concern from the Planning Department as to how that retaining wall would connect into the bridge abutment to provide access for future maintenance or inspection of the underside of the bridge. So that's one item that we'd like to see a little more detail on from the applicant. And then there was another item regarding the crosswalk on, I forget which road it is. Jim, do you remember? It was Arlington Street? Yes. And we wanted to find out a little more detail about what improvements would be made to the crosswalk, and if that would be part of the collective improvements to Arlington Street by this applicant and the hotel across the street. Other than those two items, we're satisfied with the work that the applicant has done. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, based on the City of Quincy's interdepartmental review and outside peer review, the department recommends that the board approve site plan review in accordance with the Quincy Center zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.51, and special permit under Sections 5.1.17 parking waiver and 5.3.13 signs with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall adhere to all comment letters issued by the city departments and peer review consultants, including A) Health Department review letter dated March 10, 2017 regarding stormwater operations and maintenance, rodent control, environmental control and demolition; B) Department of Public Works review letters dated March 9, 2017; C) Inspection Services Department review letter dated March 7, 2017; D) Cities Engineering Peer Review Consultant Tetra Tech review letters dated March 8, 2017, and June 16, 2017. Number two, the applicant is subject to the City of Quincy Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance and shall be responsible for adhering to the decision of the Quincy Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee for this project. Number three, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances from the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeal. Number four, the applicant will obtain any and all licenses and/or approvals necessary for Mass DOT or the MBTA to connect a pedestrian walkway and retaining wall to the West Quantum Street Bridge abutment to provide pedestrian egress to and from the proposed residential building, if any such licenses or approvals are required. Number five, the applicant shall construct a four-foot tubus concrete sidewalk on the north-estherly side of Arlington Street as shown on first-floor layout plan prepared by DeSalle Burke &amp; Associates Incorporated, revised June 1, 2017, and shall work cooperatively with CPI Management LLC, the petitioner for the proposal at 1 to -15 Arlington Street, to further discuss and revise the Arlington Street sidewalk layout and incorporate any agreed-upon revisions, if any. The applicant shall further repair and rebuild the sidewalk and curving on the south-westerly side of Newport Avenue along the proposal, the proposed residential, along the proposal as necessary. Number six, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permit and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number seven, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to Inspection Services Department at the time a demolition permit and building permit application is filed. Number eight, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number nine, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site, which will include the name and contact information for On Call Pest Control Company. Said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining their building permits. The stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Number 11, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the Planning Department and City Engineer Office the digital file as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights of way. Number 12, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to enter the site for the purpose of making observations as to the compliance of site construction with the approved site plans and conditions of approval. Number 13, the hours of construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday; 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same are approved by the Chief of Police for Sunday activity. That concludes the department's recommendation.
Just one other thing before we consider the recommendation. Mr. Fleming alluded to a piece of correspondence that was sent by Wood Tree Counselor Kane. It was addressed to me, said, "I'm writing in support of case 2017-01 for 1 to 13 Newport Avenue. Since the project was originally presented, Arista has gone back to the drawing board addressing the issues that came with the neighborhood meeting held in Wood Tree. The team was kind enough to review the new plans, which are satisfactory. The most notable changes are the increase in parking spaces and changes to the garage entry/exit being moved from Newport Avenue to Fayett Street. This project overall will add a significant contribution and welcome improvement to the currently blighted and dilapidated property. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Sincerely, Ian Kane, Wood Tree Counselor." Okay, we've heard the recommendation of the department for motion. Second discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is a continued public hearing for 27 Mill Street Site Plan Special Permit, Planning Board Case 2017-03, continued from May 10, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, on the record, my name is Fleming up here, I've got health of the Marion, LLC. As you indicated, continuation from May 10 was hearing day, at which time we made a full presentation of the applicant's proposal, which called for the construction of nine new townhouse-style residential units, which provide a garage parking for 18 vehicles, with the two additional parking spaces on the site. Since that time, Mr. Chairman, we've had, again, like the earlier proposals, several meetings and discussions with the planning department, we've worked with peer review engineers and the city's departments, responded to all the comments that were raised and the questions and concerns that were raised, and we believe that the proposal is ready to move forward at this time. There were no significant changes to the plan, but there were modifications certainly to the site plan to address issues that were of concern to this department, specifically how trash and recycling materials would be removed from the site, which will be handled through access to the site for the city's trash removal companies, and that condition that added to the decision, as well as other matters that were raised at this time. So we don't have any additional materials to come back tonight, but we're here to certainly answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from board members?
Clarify for me what you mean by the city is going to have access to remove the trash?
Sure. The site, there was a modification made to the site plan that would actually allow the city's trash contractor, the truck, to enter right into the site and to pick up barrels in front of each individual unit. Each individual unit owner will be provided with facilities for trash and recycling that will be able to store within their garage, and like is scheduled throughout the rest of the city, on scheduled days for pickup, they'll be asked to remove those trash receivables outside of their unit, and the truck will actually pull right through the complex and pick up the trash.
The trash can will be in the parking area along the street?
There will be no dumpster located because of concerns that were raised by the neighbors. That's right, they'll be brought out in front of the garages of each of those units within the facility itself, not on the street. Because there's available space within the development for the trucks to actually pull off the street and do that. And we actually coordinated that with the Director of Waste Management for the city, who works for the DPW department, and he was comfortable that the trash trucks could get into the site to do that. And they do that, actually, in other townhouse residential developments throughout the city as well, where there is access available to be able to pull into the site. And it alleviates the trash, you know, barrels being left out on the street for hours at a time.
Any other questions from board? Okay, it is a continued public hearing. Ask anyone who wishes to speak. Come up and identify yourself. As I said earlier, if you're a little shy about speaking, we have phones on the window ledge. Anybody wishes to speak on this item? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? During last time, anyone wishing to speak on the site? Hearing done. Let's take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you again. So 27 Mill Street, Tyne Bond was the city's independent peer review engineer. It's Ken Mavgrove here. Hi, Ken. Want to make your remarks on your review?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ken Mavroge from Tyne Bond, Project Manager. We conducted a third-party review for 27 Mill Street back in May, submitted a number of items and comments to the applicant and their engineer. Since that time, we have received revised materials as indicated by the applicant. Many of the comments were addressed in that resubmital. We did submit another letter earlier this week with a few outstanding items. We've been in contact with the applicant's engineer and discussed those concerns, and feel that they can be addressed fairly simply. There are a couple items, in particular, that we would sort of defer to the planning board or to other city departments. In particular, the fire truck turning plan, vehicle that is shown on the plan is roughly 26 feet in length. We just would recommend that the fire department comment on the size of the vehicle that would be able to access the property. The parking, we do have a comment on here about parking, quantity of parking spaces, there are two dedicated guest spaces. We did receive a response before the meeting. The number of parking that is required are 18 spaces essentially, if you run the cows, and they are providing greater than required. But if you, there's a sort of, a couple of different ways you can interpret the parking requirement, and we just sort of, we defer to the board to determine whether or not there's enough guest parking provided on site. The other outstanding items pertain, these are new comments that came up this week, are the relationship of the gas, the water, and sewer lines on-site in between the two buildings. They're located really close to one another, almost on top of one another. It could be something that can be addressed with a fairly simple plan change, but we would recommend that this water and sewer have at least 10 feet of separation between the two, with a vertical separation of approximately 18 inches. We also would recommend that there be notes added to the plan that just recommend coordination between the city departments and gas companies whenever there's tie into those city services. Now, other than that, the comments are, have been discussed with the applicant or engineer. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from board? Thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Chairman and board members, based on the city's interdepartmental review and the outside peer reviewer, the department recommends that the board approve the site plan review in accordance with Quincy Center zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall adhere to all comment letters issued by the city departments and peer review consultants, including A) the Health Department review letter regarding stormwater operation and maintenance, rodent control, and environmental control and demolition; B) the Department of Public Works review letters dated May 4 and June 9 of 2017; and C) the Cities Engineering Peer Review Consultant Tyne Bond review letter dated May 9, 2017. Number two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances from the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeal. Number three, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permits and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number four, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the Inspection Services Department at the time a demolition permit and building permit application is filed. Number five, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number six, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on which, on-site, which will include the name and contact information for On Call Pest Control Company. Said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining their building permits. Number seven, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Number eight, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the Planning Department and City Engineering Office digital as, digital file as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and rights of way. Number nine, the applicant will manage the disposal of trash and recycling by requiring each townhouse unit owner to maintain trash and recycling containers within their respective garage, and place those containers in front of the garage door on designated trash recycling pickup days for disposal by the City of Quincy Trash Disposal Contractor, as discussed with the City of Quincy Department of Public Works Director of Waste and Recycling. The applicant has modified the site plan to ensure that trash disposal trucks and fire apparatus can safely enter and exit site as shown on Vehicle Turning Movement Plan Sheet C-8. Number 10, the applicant will mill and overlay the existing pavement in the areas of the two proposed driveways on Mill and First Street, and install new sidewalks for both driveways as shown on Layout of Materials Plan Sheet C-3. Number 11, the applicant shall install new sidewalks for the entire length of frontage on both Mill and First Street to match existing materials. Number 12, the applicant must also make sewer and storm drain connections to the existing City of Quincy system as discussed and approved by the Department of Public Works. Number 13, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy and/or city's designated representatives to enter the site for the purpose of making observations as to the compliance of the site construction with the approved site plans and conditions of approval. 14, the hours for construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday; 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same are approved by the Chief of Police for Sunday activity. That concludes the department's recommendation.
Okay, so the motion to approve the recommendation as outlined by the department. So a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is a continued public hearing for 95 East 1, Street Planning Board Case 2017-05, continued from the May 10 Planning Board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, is it a draw?
Who are you?
I filed all these matters at different times, so you know. It all seems to back up on me. So again, Edward Fleming here tonight on behalf of the Gillen Family Trucks for 95 East Farm Street. This too, like the earlier matter, was fully presented to the board, and since that time, we've worked hard with the planning department and the city's departments and the peer review engineer to answer and respond to any and all comments and concerns that were raised. Again, there were no significant modifications made to the plan, however, we did add conditions that Mr. Stevens will outline in a moment, that address things that the city was concerned about, and this, like the old other matter, there were concerns about the removal of trash and recycling. And again, in this particular case, vehicles will enter the site like they do on the other one, except that in this case, it will be a private disposal service company that will be retained, because they don't have the opportunity like the earlier site to circle through the site. But we are confident that we've responded to all the concerns that have been raised. Thank you.
Any questions from board? Okay, it is a continued public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Come on up, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Linda Molloni, 95 East Farm Street. I just want to say way to go, tearing up North Quincy in less than 60 minutes. Good job, good job. Concern, snow removal. Where's the snow going? Parking, I still have an issue with the parking. How many pockets walk for each unit? Did we downsize the number of units? Is it still going to be eight?
There'll still be eight, and there's two parking spaces provided for each unit under the house, which actually meets the zoning requirement.
And for visitors, parking for visitors?
Well, actually, the two parking spaces that are provided actually provides for the unit itself and for visitors, and the statute or the ordinance requires two spaces. So there's two spaces provided for each. So this actually meets the ordinance.
And the snow's not going to be pushed out of the street?
And there's a significant amount of room on the site to provide for storm removal all along the side of the site and towards the rear of the site as well.
Well, obviously, it's going to go through, but I just want to say way to go, tearing up North Quincy, literally in less than 60 minutes. Good job, guys. Good job.
Anybody else wishing to speak? All be recorded. During last time, anybody wishing to speak? Cut in, send a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Not yet, a couple minutes.
Oh, I forgot.
Mr. Chairman, through you, the board members. The independent engineering peer review firm of Beals &amp; Thomas performed a review. I've got Matt Cody here in the audience, who is prepared to make his report.
Cody.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, for the record, Matt Cody, Beals &amp; Thomas, who are peer review consultants for the city on this project. We initially made comments to the board on the letter made by his team. As a consequence of those comments, we received revised materials and documents from the applicant, which were reviewed, and we issued another letter, most recently dated June 8, that summarizes our most recent findings. For the most part, all the comments were addressed to our satisfaction, but we would like to highlight a couple of outstanding items that we certainly don't feel should, you know, prohibit the board from moving forward, but would be conditioned to approval and/or, you know, coordinated prior to the issuance of the building permit. First, there's a large retaining wall proposed for the rear of the property. One of our comments is requested fence or some kind of fall protection for the top of that wall. The applicant has added notations indicating a fence would be provided, however, no detail of that fence has been provided. So that's something the board might want to consider as far as from an aesthetic or functionality point of view. Second comment we made was, again, as the applicant has mentioned, is just kind of a long, like, long linear driveway into the site. So we requested that fire department review that and ensure that there's corporate access for emergency vehicles and/or the trash issue that has been discussed for larger vehicles that need to enter and exit the study. Comments 3, 6, and 7 were primarily dealing with utility connections, which will be, again, be handled, you know, through DPW review and issuance of building permits and work with private utility companies such as Gas Company. Comment 10 related to some landscaping concerns. A landscaping plan was provided, but it did seem to be some inconsistencies with how the plan was represented and how the plants themselves were listed, however, we feel that's an issue that can be certainly resolved quickly. And lastly, there was one stormwater comment that remained outstanding regarding an inconsistency between the watershed plan provided and some of the modeling, but again, an issue that we don't see as being substantial enough to warrant in concern, something that needs to be addressed. But with that, again, the comments were substantially completed and addressed, so if you have any questions, we'll answer them.
Any questions from board? Thanks. Okay. For the other?
Chief has a question. So, to try and picture, if up at Atlantic Middle School on the soccer field, looking at the property, what am I going to see behind it? It's going to be evergreen shrubs between the retaining wall and the back? And how high are those going to be?
Mark Cottrell is just here. The landscaping plan is proposed, an evergreen hedge along the lawn. I wouldn't imagine, you know, ultimately, you're probably going to be such a mess 15 feet high eventually, but you're probably planting six-foot trees at this point. Dimensions out on the plant.
Which will be above retaining wall as well, because there'll be retaining wall constructed at the back of the site, which will elevate the site from the park in the rear of the site with an additional six-foot.
The trees themselves are elevated off the field as well. The way that slope works is probably about another four feet above the field, and then it goes up again.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from board?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the members. Based on the City of Quincy interdepartmental review and outside peer review, the department recommends that the board approve the site plan review in accordance with Quincy Center's zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall adhere to all comment letters issued by the city departments and peer review consultants, including A) Health Department review letter dated May 9, 2017 regarding stormwater operation and maintenance, rodent control, environmental control, and demolition; B) the Department of Public Works review letter dated June 9, 2017; C) Cities Engineering Peer Review Consultant Beals &amp; Thomas review letters dated May 15 and June 8 of 2017. Two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances from the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeal. Three, the applicant and future condo owner/association will privately manage the disposal of trash and recycling. disposal of trash and recycling by requiring each townhouse unit owner to maintain trash and recycling containers within their respective garage and place those containers in front of the garage door on designated trash recycling pickup days for disposal by a private trash disposal contractor to be retained by the condominium owners' association. The applicant has analyzed and created an auto turn plan to ensure that trash disposal trucks can safely enter and turn around to exit the site. Number four, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permit and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number five, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the Inspection Services Department at the time a demolition permit and the building permit application is filed. Number six, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number seven, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining their building permits. Number eight, stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Nine, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the planning department and city engineer office the digital as-built files showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and right of way. Number ten, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to enter the site for the purpose of making observations as to the compliance of site construction with the approved site plans and conditions of approval. Number eleven, the applicant shall replace the sidewalk the entire length of frontage on East Quantum Street to match existing materials. Number twelve, the hours of construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows, seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday, eight AM to four PM on Saturday. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same or approved by the Chief of Police for Sunday activity. And that concludes the department's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Is there any motion?
So moved.
So second to the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Give me the brief answer, please. My chair has answered two minutes.